Okay, seeing that it's about 7 o'clock. I'm gonna open up the meeting of the zoning board of appeals in Halifax, Mass. For August 10th, 2020. And in attendance right now in our Zoom meeting is Kasaya Nazrallah, Jerry Joy, Robert Durgan, Dan Basap, and myself, along with Attorney Amy Questle. Okay, let's kick off on the first petition. Petition number 924, Mr. Andrews. Gordon, did you want to open up with anything here?
Sorry, I was on mute. Do you want to open both of them, 922 and 924?
Well, on our agenda, I have two separate ones, Gordon. Right now, we should do 924, that's the one that the time scheduled slot for 7:00 PM. If that's okay with you.
Okay. Bring up that one. Sorry, I didn't have the file organized correctly. Sorry about that, just waiting for the file to open. So, on April 8th, I requested zoning enforcement and location of the building permits. Modified permits 117-15, 117-16, 117-17, 117-18, and the certificate of occupancy for 17-15. It was denied enforcement. And it was denied because it was mute. Denial here, so I think there's two denials. So, as of right now, the party trust does not have all the required permits needed for the building permits to be issued. They did not receive an aquifer protection permit at the time. Understand why their building permits haven't been revoked at this point in time.
Okay, I do understand that there was a meeting, hearing with Judge Frey. And I know Amy Questle was present there during that hearing. So, Amy, could you kind of bring us up to date on what those issues were that were discussed in remedy, hopefully?
Sure, sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason why these building permits were not automatically revoked was because the party trust had sought and obtained a stay on action regarding the building permits. So, the judge essentially was giving them time to obtain all of the permits necessary. And so, that is why the building commissioner or the building inspector determined that the appeal was mute, was moot at the time. However, we're now in a little bit of a different situation. So, the party trust applied for a special permit in the aquifer protection district under 167, Section 17. And that is a result of my memo to the zoning board of appeals a while back when we had to determine if there were any outstanding permits. When determining whether there was any outstanding permits, to determine whether the property that's owned by the party trust, that's the subject of all of this litigation and administrative appeals, et cetera, the properties located off of Elm Street. The plan that we looked at showed the property being within the aquifer protection district. However, that plan was superseded by a 2003 plan, which was, which in 2003, the aquifer protection district bylaw was amended and the 2003 plan took effect. It was approved by the attorney general. And the 2003 plan, or overlay map, it's called, does not show Elm Street being within the aquifer protection district. So, the party trust and the town entered into an agreement for judgment today, whereas we basically just said to the court that the special permit is no longer necessary because of this plan that I missed.
So, did they appeal the zoning board's remand decision? Within 20 days?
Mr. Chairman, is that through you or I?
I have no idea, who was that, by the way?
Gordon.
Oh, Gordon. Well, I understand, when was this meeting brought to the Judge Frey's attention, Amy?
It was on, no, they did not, if I may answer, Mr. Chairman. They did not appeal, they did not appeal the decision of the zoning board within 20 days. In my opinion, they, that's of no, that's of no effect because of the fact that it's essentially not needed, which is why the parties entered into an agreement for judgment. So, we have presented an agreement for judgment to the judge just today, so I'm not surprised we haven't heard anything back. But that agreement for judgment, if the judge agrees, then the judge will say that the aquifer protection, that the special permit is not necessary.
So, basically, even before the process went to that to the planning board for the special permit, if I understand it correctly, we based our decision on the response back to Judge Frey, whether or not all permits were necessary at the time. They all were, except for that one, which I believe the board voted on, that it was necessary to have a special permit for the aquifer protection, based on information, based on acquired information.
Correct, correct. It was erroneous information on my part, because I did not, I did not have the 2003 plan that amended the zoning bylaw in front of me.
We have since got that with copies of the attorney general's approval.
We do, we do, yeah, yes, we do. It's at, in fact, it's at the town clerk's office.
Okay, Gordon, have you been made aware of this?
I heard just now that they've been entered into an agreement, I did not know that until just now. So, it still doesn't, you know, we're looking at the site plan requirements, there's no separate lots, and there is no private way been created. I still don't understand how you can issue building permits for lots that don't exist. Frontage on that private way.
That's been discussed by the board and voted on, as was, as we were told by the judge to do so and submit. And again, as far as I know, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, like I just mentioned, all the permits that were necessary were voted by the board that were actually, that are required, are in effect for the property, for the Mandurah Estates.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just, I don't understand how you're appealing the denial of the planning board's special permit request, and there was no appeal of the zoning board remand decision. How does that take place?
Gordon, from what I understand, we're not appealing anything.
No, no, no. You made, the zoning board made a determination.
We voted on something based on information that was out of date, incorrect, and not in effect.
So, what I'm asking is, do you have to have another remand decision? Is this gonna be remanded back to the zoning board? So, you guys make another vote?
I wouldn't think so, but I'll ask Amy, I'll ask that.
No, it's not as if, there's a difference, because it's not as if the special permit should have been granted, or another special permit is needed. It makes the issue moot, because they don't need it, they just, they're not in jurisdiction. They do not fall under the jurisdiction of 167, Section 17. And so, what would, what happens is that the report to the judge, which was just simply a report, it was, it was just a, you know, a report after remand, is I think how I titled it. The other two permits, the board determined that they had obtained those two, and therefore they had one left, but now, come to find out, there's no jurisdiction for them to actually obtain that. And so, there's nothing that the zoning board needs to do at this point, there's nothing.
Amy, could you explain the agreement for judgment that was filed today in land court and the ramifications of that?
Sure, the agreement for judgment will, if the court approves the agreement for judgment and issues an order, it will simply get rid of the, it will end the party trust versus the planning board case, which Mr. Andrews is not a party to. It really, it has, it has very little. Since we're at an open meeting, I don't want to dive too far down the litigation rabbit hole. There are still two pending cases against the zoning board of appeals. And that has, it has no effect on those two cases.
All right, I just wanted to make sure it had nothing to do with petitions 924, and then later on for petition number 922.
No, the only thing is, it would simply make the appeal, it would make the appeal moot, because you've already made a determination that the permits, that the two permits that they needed, they had, this third permit they don't need now, so.
Okay, any other comments from any of the members of the board, Kasaya, or Bob, or Jerry?
Yes.
Sorry?
I'm satisfied with it.
Bob, you all good, you understand what was all, took me.
I understand, it sounds to me like they don't need the permit. Be nice to know how the judge rules on it, but I think he'll rule that it's not required.
Okay, Jerry?
Feel the same way.
Okay, I'll open up to any other questions. I'll just say Anthony, I'm sorry, I didn't want to butcher your last name there, brother. Any comments or anything?
This is Attorney Anthony Ponabianco, I appreciate that. Attorney Questle accurately summarized where we are and what our opinion of it, and that the, both of the appeals are, before the board tonight are moot, so, and the special permit is unnecessary, so the appeal of that consideration is unnecessary and moot. So, we agree with Attorney Questle's opinion that she stated today.
Gordon, is your attorney present, I don't see her on the thing here, did she want to make a comment or anything?
I don't think she's on.
Oh, okay, I just didn't want to gloss over, anybody else have any other comments or anything they'd like to add? Well, okay, I see it as necessary here, that given the information that was provided, I think that petition number 924 regarding the Mandurah Estates property should be denied. And I would entertain a motion to deny petition number 924.
I'll make a motion to deny petition number 924, I'll stand.
So, I have a second?
Second.
If you have a motion and a second to deny petition number 924, I'm gonna ask for a voice vote, Jerry?
Yes.
Kasaya?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I missed it, somebody's jumping in?
My attorney's just signing in. Through you, the land use attorney, could she just give a summary of what she just said about what happened today?
Right now, Gordon, I will do that, but right now, I have a motion on the floor with two people to vote on it, let me finish the vote, the voice vote, and then, yes, I will do that. Mr. Durgan, well?
Yes.
I myself vote yes. Dan? Wasari?
Yep, yes.
Okay, the motion to deny petition number 924 has been voted on unanimously, and petition number 924 has been denied. Okay, Gordon, where is she? I don't see her on my list here.
The pumpkin photo.
Jenny, there she is, right there. Jenny Kramer, you there?
I'm here, yep.
Oh, okay, there you go. Sorry, right in the middle of the vote there, I wanted to finish the motion that was on the floor that had been seconded. Gordon said you wish to make a comment?
No, I was asking if Attorney Keswell could just give an update, because she wasn't signed in, she gave the update, just to repeat it.
I'm sorry, my bad. Amy, would you mind reiterating that, please?
Sure, and the, the planning board determined that, we filed an agreement for judgment today, in the case of the, in the case of the party trust versus the planning board. And that was filed today indicating that the aquifer protection district special permit was not necessary, because the 2003 plan, which superseded the plan that I had, that I had based my information off of, that that plan does not show that Elm Street property is within the district, the overlay map, it's not on the overlay map.
That's pretty much shit in a nutshell. Board felt that if it's moot and not necessary, we had taken a vote prior on the two other items, and in compliance with the judge's orders on the remand, voted in favor of the other two, the only third one being the fact that it did not have the special permit for the aquifer protection, which has been determined now that it was never necessary as of 2008? 2008?
No, I'm sorry, here, it was, the amendment was in 2003.
Great, okay. The original one, Amy, if I was, the 2003 plan that replaced the plan in the, of 1997, was it, 96?
97, it's my recollection 97, Charlie might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but.
97 was the original change, comprehensive change in the bylaw that established the aquifer protection district. I believe the only thing that got changed in 2003 was the map itself. There were slight changes to the wellhead protection districts around the Y Camp, over on the west side of West Monponts upon, and Richmond Park Wells, which are south of East Monponts upon.
So, definitions and anything like that had remained the same, it was just that, Amy, what you referred to as the overlay map?
Correct, so, so, correct, so in 167, Section 17, subsection D, it's establishment of districts, and that is, the establishment of the districts is what cites to the 2003 plan, and states that the, that section, the districts were established, that section was amended in 512, 2003, annual town meeting, Article 44.
Awesome. Okay, I do have about four or five minutes here before we can open up the meeting for petition number 922 at 7:30. We can run through some of the other things on the agenda. Gentlemen on the board, any changes, deletions, corrections in the minutes that will forward to your attention, from the first one being Monday, July 13th, 2020? Any corrections or changes, guys? I haven't, I didn't see any, I look forward.
I didn't notice any.
Dan, you're our official editor.
I am.
Yes, yeah, we just made that.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see any.
I didn't either. All right, then, I'll entertain a motion then to accept the minutes of July 13th, 2020, as presented.
Motion to accept the minutes of July 13th, 2020, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Again, I'll ask for a voice vote, Kasaya?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the motion passes unanimously to accept the minutes as presented of July 13th, 2020. All right, let's, let's move on to the minutes of July 29th, 2020. Gentlemen, any changes, deletions, corrections, or additions if they were required? Oh, that was just postponing the meeting due to the governance restrictions. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of July 29th, 2020, as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of July 29th, 2020.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion, a second to accept the minutes of July 29th, 2020. Kasaya, your vote, please?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dan?
I was not at that meeting, so I guess I abstained.
Okay, and I vote yes. So, it passes 4-0 to 0. Okay, Alana, is that all the minutes we have there?
That's all of them.
Okay, sometimes I just like to check, make sure you're with us.
I'm always with you.
Thank you, Alana. All right, I still got a couple minutes. Alana, what else do we have on the agenda that we can do, do we have any business?
Just have two other discussions for 8 o'clock and 8:15.
Nothing else, we don't have bills or anything, we're all good?
No bills.
Oh, Alana, did you get that signed bill there for that 1440?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so long as you got it. All right. All right, Gordon, seeing that you are here, and it's approximately 7:30, we'll open up the meeting for petition number 922. Gordon, would you like to start off with anything, or anything to add, or change, or delete?
Sure, it's the appeal of the building permits, the occupancy permit, and the special permit, I mean, it's the site plan for 922.
We have, again, what were the dates on now, there were dates that, on the first appeal, it was motioned and voted on by the zoning board of the previous meeting that all permits were, were again in effect. Amy, would you like to, I'm sorry to have you repeat all that, or just review that quickly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, Amy Questle, Land Use Town Council. The, back on July, July 3rd, 2017, 2019, I'm sorry, the judge ordered that the ZBA determine what permits were necessary, remaining permits were necessary. He then clarified that later with a docket entry, and so, that's when we held a hearing. And at that hearing, you, there was a memo from me, which stated that three permits were necessary. Two of them, you had determined that they had the site plan and the special permit, and the third was a special permit for the aquifer protection district, where I had determined that they were in the aquifer protection district, and after subsequent investigation, they are not within the aquifer protection district. The party trust relying on my erroneous information went to the planning board, and they applied for a special permit, and they were denied, because it was a, the planning board is, they have five members, one member had to recuse himself, so they had four members, and they had, because it's a special permit, they needed a super majority, so they needed four positive votes to get the special permit. They only, they only acquired two, so it was a split vote, it was two to two. So, they did not get the special permit. They then filed an appeal in land court, and it was, it's the parties in that appeal are the party trust versus the planning board of Halifax. Once we found out that the, after that, we found out that the 2003 overlay does not show Elm Street within, on the overlay map, it's not in jurisdiction, and therefore, the special permit is not necessary. So, we then filed an agreement for judgment, the agreement for judgment is where the two parties are agreeing that they're not in jurisdiction, and that was simply, that was just filed today.
Okay, so, once again, we're back where the, where the vote, the board has already voted, as you said at the July 3rd meeting, that the other permits were all in effect and necessary, the only thing lacking was the, was the special permit that actually no longer is required for the permit process. So, any other members of the board, of the zoning board, like to make a comment, as same as with the previous petition, any thoughts? Bob, how about you, I'll start with you. Oh, Bob, Durgan, you're not, oh, there you go.
I'm good, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, how about you, Bob? Any thoughts on this petition in front of us now, basically with the same information that we've been provided with?
Sounds like the last petition, same information, they have the two required permits. I think they have everything they need.
Okay, Kasaya?
I think the same way, I mean, they have, they have, the permits are in place, I think we should just go on and give them what they need to proceed with the project.
Jerry, Mr. Joy, Jerry?
Yeah, I feel the same way, nothing's changed.
Okay, I'll open up to, anybody else ever like to make any comments before the board takes a vote? Gordon, would you like to address this at all?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, can you just tell me what the board decided that the site plan actually shows? Does the site plan show a private way that gives frontage with four separate lots? Or is the site plan, does the site plan show just one single lot?
I can tell you, Gordon, that the board voted on, on two different occasions, that the requirements necessary for the special permit and the building permit, that occupancy permit, were in fact intact by answering the remand from Judge Frey. So, for specifics, the board has already voted on that, that those permits and everything were in place, were necessary, and I haven't indeed been complied with. The only thing was that, that one special permit, which the board now has been provided with the information that, in fact, it was not necessary from, from the jump start, actually.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify, because the November vote that the board took said Okay, I, I'm just trying to clarify, because the November vote that the board took said that it had to be on separate lots. That was the November vote, and then the February vote shows a site plan that shows separate lots that haven't been created, and brings us back to the same position that we were in with the previous set of plans from two thousand fifteen. And shows lots, the lots haven't been created. The judge determined if the site plan shows lots, then it's necessary to have lots, and I'm just, again, pointing out, there's no lots been created through subdivision control. So I, I don't know where we are, because I don't know what it is that the plant, what the zoning boards feels that the site plan shows.
Well, I'd refer back to Amy, but Amy, as far as my understanding is here, what's before us on nine twenty-two is whether or not to revoke the, the building permit on, for Amanda Estates. As far as the other specifics, I, it's, in my opinion, I think it's, they've all been discussed, they've all been voted on, and it's all been determined. Am I missing something, you know?
And, no, no, you're not. I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman. The Amanda's, I mean, I'm sorry, the party trust asked for plant, the planning board to modify the site plan decision, and the planning board did. The party trust then asked the zoning, I'm sorry, they asked the zoning board first to modify their decision, and the zoning board, they did not get an, a super majority. They then went to the planning board, and the planning board did modify the site plan, and then they came back to the zoning board of appeals for modification again, and the, at that point, the zoning board of appeals did modify the permit, and that has been appealed. So, but, but it was done, so that is already being contested in court, so I don't think that needs to be discussed here at all.
Well, the reason why I'm bringing it up is because they're two separate things. There's an appeal of the special permit itself, which I'm doing, that everyone's aware of. Then there's appeal of the modified building permits. So under a special permit, you can continue building with an appeal of your special permit. You cannot continue building with an appeal of the building permits, and that's what we've been through for the last three years. Correct?
I'm just
No, the, no, your, your appeal that originally went to Superior Court was an appeal pursuant to GL forty-eight, section seventeen of the decision of the Town of Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals filed with the town clerk on March. That's the modification.
So that's the special permit, correct?
No, that's the modification. The, the special permit case started in, I think, two thousand seventeen. That's the one that's being handled by prior Land Use Council, and then
That's the building permits, Amy.
I, I don't know, but that's, that's the one where there was a decision in, in two thousand nineteen and a remand. This, the modification case is, it's the one that was filed originally in Plymouth Superior, but it was moved to Land Corps. Clearly states that it's a mod, it was an appeal of the modification from the zoning, the zoning board of appeals modification on March fourth, two thousand twenty.
Good.
Mr. Penbiano?
I agree with your position, Mr. Chairman, that, that denial of the appeal is appropriate here in this instance, as it's moot as, as to what Attorney Quessel had previously stated, so I think that's the appropriate maneuver. I don't need to to weigh in on it further. The zoning board has made their determination on this previously, and it, it would just solidifies it today as well.
Okay, thank you. In which case then, members of the zoning board of appeals, I'll entertain a motion to, for the denial of petition number nine twenty-two based on our new information and that presented from court by both Judge and, and in the court. So I'll, I'll accept a motion. Jerry, or somebody?
I'll make a motion to deny petition number nine twenty-two based on the new information provided.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second to deny petition number nine twenty-two. I'll call for a voice vote. Kasaya?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob Durgen?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Dan?
Yes.
Okay, it passes to deny unanimously, it passes to deny petition number nine twenty-two. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon.
Alright, Amy, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We do have some time before our eight o'clock discussion, so unless, unless the parties are on, are they on, where it's just a discussion? Are Jean Donahue from eighty-seven Plymouth Street, that they logged in here? I do not see them.
He said that she would be on around seven thirty, seven forty-five.
Okay. Actually, where it's just a discussion, Alana, would, would you mind, do you have a phone number there for them? I give her a call, and she can jump in here.
Um, I have an email address. Let me see if I can find the number.
Alrighty. Kasaya, I like that we're focusing on you there.
Anybody know any good jokes?
A bump, bump.
Now, will he, will he appeal this decision?
Don't know.
Bert, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was unable to find her number, but I sent her an email just now.
Alrighty, well, it's not quite quarter rub. She said she'd be in between seven thirty and quarter rub. Alana, what else do we have? Do we have anything else?
And then there's a discussion at eight fifteen with John Estes of thirty-five Ocean Ave. He's proposing, he's proposing a deck or dock in the water.
In the water.
I haven't heard from him since, though, so I'm not sure. I think Jeanie Donahue is here.
Hello.
Oh, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well. Sorry, we kind of shanghaied you a little bit early here, because we were done a little early. You had a discussion regarding an addition to the garage at eighty-seven Plymouth Street?
Yes.
Is, is that your home now? Is that where you?
It is.
The owner's a record there?
Yes.
Okay, I saw the pictures of it. Well, what's the intention? What are we doing?
Yeah, so we had had a fire in our garage, and as we looked to put it back together, we're thinking about expanding it to include that second bay. And the question really is, if we've done some measurements ourselves, and it looks like we'd be pretty much approaching that thirty-foot mark to where we need to leave thirty feet for our neighbor's property.
How close up, how close to figure it might be?
I think it leaves exactly, pretty much exactly thirty feet.
On the backside garage. On the front of the garage, I think we have more than that.
Because the property is at a slant.
Where, where are you, by the way? Where is eighty-seven Plymouth Street?
We're right on one oh six. We're by Halifax Estates.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, 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 on the right-hand side there?
Opposite side of the road, yeah.
On the left-hand side.
Okay. Alright, well, I'll, I'll be honest with you. If, if you're within the thirty feet there, you, you'd comply with the side setback requirement.
Right.
I think you'd, unless you're, you're changing the use, you know, as in it's not going to be any kind of commercial structure, you're not increasing what about the second floor, living space or anything up there, or?
So we are, right now, kind of getting together costs and everything like that. If we were to do a room above the, because the garage would be twenty-four by twenty-four?
Yes.
So a room above, we'd probably leave it unfinished for now, but, so yeah, there would be a second story above. But no commercial use, it's all residential.
Right, that's exactly it. Any other comments from any of the other members of the board? If they're within the thirty feet, I, I don't see a problem with it, unless I'm missing something.
What was the rear setback?
It would be, if we went forward three feet, it would be fifty-seven feet off the street.
No, the rear setback.
Oh, I'm sorry, rear.
I think they're well within, Dan.
Yeah.
Forty feet.
Yeah, much greater than forty feet, by the looks of the pictures.
Yeah, we're much more than the fifty-seven off the front.
Oh, I, I thought they had said thirty feet off the back.
No, no, sorry.
Just the back corner.
No, 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 that was other property.
Okay.
I guess our question was, because we're hearing different things about having to pay almost like two grand to have the property surveyed. So is that, we'd like to avoid that if possible, obviously, but is that the only way to get it? We just want to run into problems down the road if someone were to come and say, hey, you know, do you have proof?
You're gonna need to get it surveyed for the building permits alone, and as-built after the confirmation, so you have to have it done.
So we have to have it done regardless.
Yes.
But just those two lines, right, of the side and the rear? They wouldn't have to have the whole property surveyed, correct?
I, I wouldn't think so.
I, I thought it was
You can save money that way. Excuse me?
Isn't it a package thing, Bob? You have, once you do it, they do the whole?
Yeah, but they can kind of pick and choose a little bit, I think. They don't have to stake out the whole property. I think it's mainly where they need, need to do.
You can save money that way.
And survey about that.
Okay. Alrighty.
Yeah, I, I personally, unless somebody else has any, says, hello, it's about a, you're forward in the side setback, you're certainly within the fifty-foot front setback. You've got plenty of room on the, in the back. I don't see a big, I don't even see the need or the necessity.
Be on here.
For variance, yeah, exactly.
I guess we would come back to you if we found for any reason we were going to be twenty-nine feet from the property order. That's when we would come back to you guys and get it back on your
If, if it's within the thirty feet, yes.
Okay.
But they would swing that by, you'd run that by Mr. Pico, the building inspector, he'd, he'd let you know. And especially, yeah, yeah, because you, you don't want to have the as-built done and then find out, oh, yeah, it is twenty-nine feet, it's not, you know, it's not within the requirement, so.
Right.
I think the surveyors can go out to the property, survey the side setback, and then, you know, whatever is eight feet, ten feet off their existing garage, to tell you where you are, and how far off the side property line you are, even before you start building or making plans or any of that. So they can survey that portion of the property to show you exactly where you are, and where you're gonna, where you're gonna sit, and whether you're gonna need that variance.
Right. I think that's what we need to do then. Okay.
Alrighty.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have any other questions? You're all good?
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Alright.
Alright.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
How about the Estes property at thirty-eight Ocean Ave, the proposed deck? What's, what's our discussion with that one? Are they with us? Alana related with us?
Um, I'm not sure. I see a couple of people that I'm not, I don't know if that's them. I did just send him an email to let him know that you were ready for him, so if he responds.
I did see a lady there earlier. I wonder if that was her or not. Did you send them an email, or did you say you called them, Alana? I'm sorry, I, I missed it.
We only communicated through email, so I just, I sent him an email.
Oh. Alright. Why do we always go back to Kasaya? What's up with that? And then he blacks it out. Sorry, I can't help it. No, I'm really not sorry, Kasaya, I'm really not.
I know you're not. I'll get you tomorrow.
I know you will. I think after the Estes, I think that's it. I think that's all we have. Alana, do we have the, the minutes for the minutes for the Country Club Estates? We, we approve those minutes?
Yes.
And so when's our next meeting for that? Is it September?
That's September second.
What happened to the twenty-nine? What was that?
I don't know. You were choosing between two dates in September. I think it was between September second and September ninth, I believe. And I think you chose the second.
Oh, okay, so that is, that's within the forty-five day expiration thing, so I, I just want to make sure that it's all squared away, that's all good to go.
Yes.
Alright. And we approved those minutes, so there aren't any other minutes or anything, right? Alana, you good?
Nope.
I'm just asking you so I could blame you if there's any problems.
It wouldn't be the first time.
Yeah. Oh, good. Amy, Quessel just sent an email off with a copy of that documentation that she spoke of this afternoon, so she said it had been filed. She just sent a copy of it on an email, so we have that on files. We're all good.
Bert, could you forward that to me, because I didn't get it? Please.
Okay. Look at, see if she sent it to you. I'll get it up to you.
Thanks.
I mean, it just came in just a second as we speak. Oh, wow. It's quite a few of them. But anyway, it, she did, I did speak with her earlier, and she said that it had, had been filed. She was waiting for confirmation, and now there's an actual copy that we can put in the files, so I'd, I'd appreciate if you had that in there, Alana, when you get it. Make sure we have it.
I'll save it in the files as soon as, I don't, I didn't receive it from her, so.
Alright. Any luck with the Estes property? Anybody? They on there or anything?
I don't see anybody new. I don't have a response email yet either.
Estes, is, is this the one that they, Jerry, was this the one that they were gonna put the three-season room attached, connecting it to? Is that the same property? Is that a different one?
I think that's a different one.
I don't know why, Estes sounds familiar. Thirty-eight Ocean Ave. Oh, no, 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 no. This is, you're right. It is a completely different one, because this one is, as Alana said, this is the one, they want to go into the water with the, some kind of decking or whatever. Anybody have any ideas on that? I personally do not know where we would even start about allowing a permit. Is that with the environmental, maybe? I would imagine it has to go through there. I always thought, I always thought that the property line was measured as a discussion here. As a discussion here, that it was, uh, measured, uh, to the water line. The edge of the property, because it, in, in things that have happened in the past, that, because that was always, you know, the water level rises and falls. You know, up and down during the course of the year. But the, uh, some of the other petitions over the years that I recall, uh. Would have to, uh. You know, uh. It, it, they did not involve their property going into the water and conservation also, right? I would imagine, uh.
I think so. I mean, it sounded, it sounded like they were going to do a dock. Does, is that also?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they're definitely in the water.
Right.
They're doing, if it's not going to be on land, ZVA and planning have no jurisdiction. DEP, Concom, maybe the police chief depending on the type of dock. Totally dock, whether it's a country dock, although those three venues are the places for them to be. Working with, but if it's not going to be on the land, then. They don't need to see you. They don't need to see the planning board.
Now, if it was this. See if it's a structure that starts on the land and goes into the water, it's strictly conservation and environmental and.
Well, if it goes, if it's on the land, then.
Right.
We'll have to see, I mean.
If you back up to the water, don't you own?
I'm not sure that you'd want a deck or a dock that was fifty percent, you know. Sitting on the beach and fifty percent sitting in the water. I mean, that's one of the reasons why they take the dock out. On, over the boat ramp on Route fifty eight is because winter's going to damage it. We do a fifty fifty.
I, I know just in the past, we do have docks in the water, but whether or not they were grandfathered in, uh, you know, prior to. Anything else, I, I'm sure they can be fixed or repaired, but as far as, uh, I don't know, I don't know. They'd have to do some research on that.
You can repair them if they're, if it's, uh, in bad shape, you can repair them without a permit?
Oh, I don't know, but not without a permit. I'm just saying you could, you'd have to, you, you'd have to get a permit to, to repair it. But I mean, as far as to erect or put a new one in. I, I really don't know. I don't pretend to know what. You'd have to start, I would start in conservation. That's where I would start.
Still no email, sorry.
Be interesting to, to see what, uh, that they did out of the original questions, if they went. To the building inspector, what, what Rob would, uh, come up with for, uh. At least a place to start. I really wouldn't know.
Okay, I just spoke with John Estes and he is, um, he's joining us momentarily.
Okay, thanks, Alana.
He wasn't aware, I guess, that it was a Zoom meeting. He, um, he thought it was a physical meeting because the conservation has been. In person and he was thinking conservation was zoning board, so anyway, he'll be here in a minute.
Well, that was a good, uh. No, I, I did give more than one minute to answer a question.
Yeah, I know. I, I think we gave him too much time.
Yeah, had to go there, Bert, didn't you?
Hey, but I'm glad we can wrap this up kind of early. I don't feel like being on here until ten o'clock tonight. Uh, yeah, something.
Oh, so I just couldn't let it go, you know?
Yep.
Okay, I think you have John with you now.
John, where are you?
I'm popping up.
Okay, there you go.
Just gotta give me a second. Everything's kind of like. Loading. Oh my God. No, it's taking forever.
There you go. You're up.
It was taking forever. I don't know what was happening.
All right, John, uh, sorry, we, uh, kind of hurried you up a little. We finished up earlier than what we thought, but, uh. Uh, give us an idea. Well, what, what's your, uh, what's your proposal here?
All right, so I have, I didn't know, so I built a, uh. Platform dock slash, I guess, um, it's being called a deck. Uh, on, on the very edge of what, I don't. Know if it's considered or it's, but it's es- essentially a platform that, uh, its main support parts are the same as my dock that was there already. And it's essentially, it, it's over the water. And we're trying to figure out whether it's. Considered a dock and I'm then contacting the. Um, environmental board to figure out whether it's in, in it, like, uh, whether it affects or endangers any of the, um. Stuff from the water or if I have to get the zoning board to approve my addition onto the property. Um, as an actual addition on the property. That's what I, it's, it's very vague as to what I'm supposed to be doing. That's why, I think this is why I'm having the most confusion with it because. Um, Rob Picker, Picker Really, I think is his name, the guy that does the.
Building inspector, yeah?
Yeah.
What did he say? That's.
So he told me it's a dock or it's a deck because it's being used as a deck. But if you, by definition, and the building structure by definition is considered a dock because of the way it's attached to the land and because of the way it's secured in the water.
So it's out over the water right now?
Correct.
All right, now what is, so he said, what did he say you'd need from the, uh, zoning board?
Uh, he told me. That. He would need, uh. Approval from the zoning board to build the proper, I think, I'm, I could be wrong about this. Like, my words are not perfect on what his statements are because I don't have any writing. He never. Wrote it down and his secretary never wrote it down exactly what specifically it was, but, um. It essentially was that he wanted. An approval from the zoning board to allow me to have the deck or the dock. On the property or off the property, depending on how the measurements were, but that's what I don't know. And he told me that most likely I would have to have, be having to, uh, hire a surveying company to. Find the exact edge of the property because then it would determine whether it was on the property or not. I, that's the most information I know.
Have you talked to conservation? What have they said?
Conservation told me it was fine. They. That it looked great and that it didn't seem to be harming anything.
Okay, was it there prior to you owning the property? How long's this deck slash dock been there?
The one that I currently built is, has been, has been there only like a, not even a month. I was informed from the, uh, people that live next to me. That the previous owner at one point had a platform out there, but it is not, it was disintegrated, it fell apart and the guy removed it.
So it's been removed altogether? You didn't repair a, a structure that was there?
Right.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know if you can see the chat on this, um, Zoom meeting, but I just copied and pasted, um, Rob's input.
Could you, uh, read that off, please? Because I don't have a line.
So John, he, this is what he says. John basically built a deck without a permit. It's out in the water. Um, which I guess makes it a Concom thing, issue, but the backside of the deck sits on his retaining wall at the rear of his property. He told, Rob told John he would need an engineer to determine where his back property line is. If it's on his property, it's in violation of his rear setback line. If it's totally in the water, it becomes a Concom DEP issue and that's Rob's opinion.
Well. There you have it, John. Uh, anybody else want to weigh in on this? Any questions or comments they have of John that we maybe be able to clear some of this up?
For John, you have a question based on what the building inspector wrote, what Alana read to you in a sense of where you might need to go from here.
I guess my, uh, question is. Like I'm spending all this money to get the, the surveying and I find out it's on the property. Am I going to be give, like, is there a chance that it would be allowed to stay? Or am I going to have to remove it altogether? I guess that's where I am because it's like, I'm going to spend all this money. To get a surveyor and engineer and all this stuff out. That's great. I can, I, I'm, I'm willing to do that, but I want to make sure that after I do that, I can keep it on the property, not. Remove the thing and have a whole bunch of other. Costs also associated.
So.
I guess what I'm looking for from the zoning board is, or from, I believe, he told me on the zoning board is that the zoning board would have to give me permission because I have a. Smaller lot to allow me to have this structure applied to the lot.
Right, but would you, if you want, let's assume for the moment that the part of this is on your lot.
Right.
What, and you want to be able to keep it. You'll need to get, I believe, a variance from the ZVA to do that.
Right.
You, and you, as you pointed out, you'll need to get the surveying done and apply for the variance. There'll be a public hearing, yada, yada. The ZVA tonight cannot officially tell you, yes, we're in support of this because that's not at the hearing. What you can do is talk to them, as you are doing right now, informally, in essence, say, what are your thoughts about this? Do you see any potential? Problems with this? Do you, would you have any questions that I might be able to answer tonight and get a feeling from them as to how they might? View this, but they can't officially tell you, yes, go ahead because there's no chance we'll say no.
Right.
You know, we, they might, you, because it's not a hearing, we don't, we haven't notified a butters, for instance. And I'm, I'm not saying your neighbors would be upset with you. It's simply, they have to go through that hearing process, so while they can informally. Give you their thoughts about it, they can't formally give you a yes or no tonight.
Well, I guess then my, my feeling would be, then my question would be more, so because I have a smaller lot. What do you, what are your, what's the feeling or thoughts on having an addition of, of like a? Twelve by twenty platform over the water. On this area. I know that both neighbors on, on both of my, like, talked to them before I built it. Um, and. I, I know I didn't, I, I know when I built it, I made sure that I built it so it didn't go into the, uh, didn't affect the lake and it didn't go into the lake. Like into the ground or anything. It's, it's, it's not like pork, it's not drilled holes or poured concrete into the. Uh, actual area or anything like that. Um, that's, so I guess I'm just kind of trying to figure out whether it would be. Have a chance of getting passed through or whether it, it would be decided that it's too. Obstructive or, I guess.
Okay, John, just, just to give you an idea, some, exactly what, um, Mr. Sealy just said, we, we can't give you a yes or a no tonight and there's no way I can tell you. Based on, on, on the availability of a plot plan, you know, what, what your, what this looks like, what it's going to look like, an artist concept, whatever. But there is a certain criteria that you need to meet in order to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. But there is a certain criteria that you need to meet in order to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Now, we're just going by what you've said. Again, I have I have nothing in front of me here. I don't know how big your lot is, if it's grandfathered. If it's grandfathered, then what you need to do, you would need a variance if you were building a structure on a on an undersized lot. You'd have to come to the board and show, well, there's basically three things. First, you have to show a hardship. So you could turn around and very well, there's been applicants in the past that showed because of the size, the shape, the layout, its proximity, that it's limited, that because of topography, for example, that's a hardship. You know, so you would have to show that. You would have to show that it's not detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood. There's those there's three things and that would be, hey, there's a first of all, A, it had a dock there and you'd have to look it up, you know, in the past at some time during this year or that year, there was people next door have docks. So other people in the neighborhood have have docks, you know, for and decks to that they enjoy. So would you would have to show that that's not detrimental to the character of the established character of the neighborhood. And the last one, the last criteria is that it doesn't derogate from the intent of the bylaw, which you you don't, you you're not looking for to throw out the, you know, the the bylaws just to fit your circumstances, you know. But again, like Charlie said, you would have to go up to the building inspector and tell him and get the paperwork, get that all started. I would check with conservation first, if I were you, just as a suggestion, and find out how they feel about it. Because they may say, no new docks in the pond, period. So why waste your time? They may say, yeah, if there was a pre-existing non-conforming structure in the water and or in the backyard, you know, go for it, you know, if there are other people that have the, like I said, it's not detrimental to the to the neighborhood, you know, because other people have that. So you kind of have to do some homework, John, before you'd actually come in front of the board. I don't know. How about the other members? Any guys want to draw a little input into this?
I think it's basically what you just said, Bert, you know, without having some of that information, there's no way we can determine what what's going on there. We don't even know the size of his lot, what he has, how big the the dock is. So that information we do need to know.
Okay. So when I come to, I guess, the next time to do this, the correct way the next step would be essentially to talk to the commission or the conservation board again to make sure that they think it would actually pass possibly or get their opinion. And then after that, if they think it's possible, then I would be looking at hiring a engineer or surveying company to come through. And that would, and I would, at that point, I would then have the correct information to then submit to the zoning board.
Right, John, then you'd go up and get the packet. The if you go start, I would say start with the building inspector and and say, okay, you you want to go this route or at least explore it, you know, the steps that you'd have to take and he'll tell you, you're gonna need, he'll give you a packet and that'll tell you exactly what you have to submit to the zoning board secretary, you know, a plot plan. If he said you require is a an engineer's survey or whatever, see what he says. I don't I know what it's gonna say. And then from there, if you look at that criteria and what's necessary and say, hey, yes, this thing could go. I want to go forward with it. Then I then I'd take the next step, which I would then go to conservation and see exactly, you know, where they can help you out and provide you with the right steps. And then again, evaluate the whole thing, get that the the package put together for the variance and make sure you have you have everything all ducks lining or lined up in a row and and then apply from there.
Well, is that cost? I just, I know, I'm just trying to figure out financially wise if this is even worth it anymore. Because I spent about a thousand dollars building the deck and then somebody called on me and reported that it was being built. And I know the engineer is about fifteen hundred dollars. Is there other fees that would be part of the zoning board and stuff? Oh, something happened.
You're going to have a cost of the legal ad, which is fairly minimal these days if you use the Halifax reporter. And then there's the abutter list with given your location. I suspect it's not going to be that lengthy. You've got to send certified mail out to the butters. A lot. I think there's a specific fee for the variance application, or maybe it's a fee that covers all the other costs.
Right. So the filing fee is one twenty-five. And then there will be an eighty-four dollar advertising fee, and that's to be advertised to for two weeks. And and a postage fee. And I can actually send you that, all of that information to you in an email if you'd like, John.
That would be great. This seems like a ton of extra work just for something to adding it in addition under your property. I'm like, wow. And I know there's a lot of properties in Halifax that are needing like especially in in this area that seem to be needing a lot of renovations and stuff. And this seems like it's very expensive to update to fix up a property again.
Well, we do have a process, John. That's the best I could tell you in the process does have to. Everybody needs to follow it. Doesn't make it, you know, some because some people don't, doesn't make it right, you know.
I understand.
That would be my my best recommendation at this point.
All right. So I guess I'll I'll contact him tomorrow just to see what he uses. Whether it's whether he even thinks it's going to be possible before I spend the money on the engineer because at least then I have an idea upfront.
Right.
All right.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right. Hope we were a little bit of help there. Thank you.
It was good for information. It gives me an idea of kind of what I got to do next and what I'm looking at.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, gentlemen, we have anything else we need to discuss tonight? Any new business, anything like that? Anybody wants to bring up?
I'm good.
Robert?
I'm good.
Jerry, you all good?
All set, yeah.
All right. Well, then I'll make entertain a motion to adjourn the zoning board meeting of August tenth, two thousand twenty.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Charlie, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your help and your insight there. Thank you. All right, guys. Talk to you later.
Bye.